Test 1, 2. Check, check.
Thank you for watching! Please like, share, and subscribe for more!
All right. It's a great day in Kershaw County. We have a quorum in this all-American county. I remind you, we're under the COVID emergency restrictions that were declared by the President and the Governor of this state and ratified here at this level as well at the county and in the city. Mr. Tucker is not with us on a medical issue in his family, and so we have six here, and we are now called to order. With that, I ask y'all all to rise, and Councilman Russell Brazel will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Everybody bow your head, please. Dear Father, thank you for this group of individuals that are leading the county and help us to be mindful, Lord, that we're to lead in a positive manner, and, Lord, help everyone understand that we're here to do the right thing for the people of Kershaw County, Lord. You just guide us as we think through decisions and budgets and everything that we have to dive into. Just guide our minds and our thoughts and our mouths as we navigate the course of the next few months. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, with its chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being of us.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. And with that, we go to public comments. Under our rules with these COVID days and separation, I turn to Mary. Mary, do we have any written submissions? None? With that, Mr. DeBeau, do we have any of those that signed up today?
Mr. Chairman, one person signed up, Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb.
It bothers me, it bothers me that we're still so afraid of this virus and ignoring the treatment. From the upper levels, they're just will not promote zinc as a treatment. It's not a cure, just a pretty good treatment that keeps you out of the hospital while your immune system takes care of things. I suspect, just from me, from my own experience, that it would have saved a lot of lives, but who knows? Anyway, what I'm going to speak about today is this dangerous world. It's always been dangerous, and it's not getting any better, seems like. And so I wanted to bring up Antonin Scalia, the Supreme Court Justice that died in February five years ago. And I proclaim February to be Scalia Month, or Who Killed Scalia Month? He went on a hunting trip down to West Texas, liked to shoot birds, and he didn't come to breakfast down at the lodge. They went in and found him dead with a pillow on his face, and he didn't get an autopsy. So it looks an awful lot to me like maybe somebody did him in. It was assassination. A lot of people didn't like him for his politics. Well, back then, there were a lot of people who said, ah, that couldn't happen in the United States of America. That might be happening in Central America, something like that. But with the events here that have unfolded since then, more recently, it is a really dangerous world. I think it's more believable than ever that our Supreme Court Justice, the most conservative one, most effective one there, Thomas, is also very conservative. It just looks like somebody bumped him off. So this is Antonin Scalia Month, and I'll be holding up my sign again out on the corner for a little bit. I haven't heard any definitive investigation of it. There's still nothing said about exactly what happened. They didn't do an autopsy. So they got somebody on the telephone, a judge who went by the name of Cinderella, and it was down close to the Mexican border. So is that a name or is that a nickname? But Judge Cinderella supposedly said, well, we just call it natural causes. And I've had plenty of questions and poor answers, and the TV news hasn't been dependable. And the thing that also bothers us, bothers me, is about the military seeming to look the other way when they have a commitment to defend our Constitution and our country against enemies foreign and domestic. And a lot of us who are conservatives think they're not doing their job. And what has happened to the nuclear launch codes? My understanding is a suitcase that has that information in it that's transferred from President to President. What has happened to it? It was lost one time under Bill Clinton's administration. It was something of a scandal. He couldn't find the nuclear launch codes. Well, they did. But now, apparently, it's in Biden's hands, rather rickety old hands, and who else's hands is it going to end up in? It's a very big worry to me, and it should be to all of us. It is a dangerous world. So my suggestion, as usual, is to buy some beans and rice, put something aside a little bit if you don't know what's coming. Maybe it will help. Hope to see y'all many more times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBeau?
That concludes the sign up.
And that concludes public comments. We move now to an adoption of the agenda. And I'm going to ask that we make an amendment, but first, let's get it on the table. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda as on the screen?
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Connell. And I ask for an amendment to delete the proclamation that we have later on because the absence of Mr. Tucker. Can we have a motion to do that, please?
Move that we amend the agenda to remove the proclamation.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Brazel. The discussion is, is Mr. Tucker sponsored the proclamation honoring Black History Month, and because of his family issue, we will pray all was well, but he's asked it to be removed and placed on the agenda the next time we meet. Any other discussion? So all those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. And can we now move to vote on the agenda as amended? So with that, we move to that. Can we have such a motion, please?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Now, good. Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Connell. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and the agenda is amended. I should note, for those watching by live stream, because of social distancing, Mr. Snodgrass is off to my right, your left on the camera, and you may not be able to see him, but he has, I believe, a mic over there, right? All right, good. Thank you. Okay, the agenda is amended. We move to public presentations, the first of which is the Achievement Award, and we welcome again Mr. John Henderson. John, can you come up to the mic, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to be here once again to present another Outstanding Safety Achievement Award to Kershaw County. This year, we are presenting the award for the new employee risk management training program that your risk manager created a few years back, and it continues to offer lots of benefits for the county. And I just thank you all for your support for risk management over the years and the good investment in time and people. What I think is so significant about this new employee training program is it builds trust in the county among the employees. Barry Cato is able to talk to all the new employees, tell them what to expect when it comes to risk management and safety, what's expected of them, what to do if something happens, where they can discuss it, and they have an open discussion that's, I think Barry described it as an absolute amnesty type of situation where people can tell him anything, and that's building trust. And because of that trust, over the years, y'all have seen this, a few years back, had a little problem with some brakes on some vehicles that were wearing out too soon that resulted in some accidents. And in these meetings, Barry learned of it because people had enough trust to be able to tell him about that, and y'all made a correction there that might have saved some lives. Another thing that came out of these meetings over the years was lightning detectors. That was a suggestion from an employee out on the athletic fields on a hot spring or summer day, baseball game, and somebody's got a lightning detector, they can know when to take the appropriate precautions to prevent injuries from that. Also, I think it's quite unique and really commendable that Barry is able to, as establish a relationship in the Sheriff's Department, where he meets with the Sheriff's Department and new employees to explain to them the risk management and safety program. And listen, I really like this. There are a lot more accidents that didn't occur that are being reported. We refer to those, and I know you know this, Vic, near misses. If you don't hear about a near miss, it's going to, next time, it may not be a near miss, so you have the opportunity to take advantage of learning from something that almost happened. So I just think this is a great program, and y'all continue to make contributions, and thank you for your support for risk management and all that Barry Cato's done over the years. And he's actually been a great friend to the Association of Counties and has helped a lot of people, and we look to him on things to get his opinion, and we value that very much. So Barry, you want to come up? I'll just read the inscription while Barry's coming up. 2020 Outstanding Safety Achievement Award, Kershaw County, presented by the South Carolina Counties Workers Compensation Trust.
If you would, let's see if there are any comments from the council, gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, please, sir.
Mr. Henderson, you and I, we go way back, and it's always good to see you come here because I know when you come to our meetings, you're going to bring us good news. Barry really appreciates what you're doing. I think it's very important that we continue to move forward with safety and certainly decreases our liability and other things, but John, I appreciate all you've done as well, too.
Thank you, and I appreciate y'all's support for making this better for all people in Kershaw County. A good thing.
Other comments, please?
Sure.
Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you. Barry, congratulations. Thank you for your work for the county. Every year this time, I feel like Forrest Gump. I don't know if you see the part of the movie where he goes to the White House again, and he had to go to the White House again? And so, once again, the man from Association of Counties has come again to present Barry with an award again. So it's just, it's a trend and something that we're proud of here in Kershaw County, and it's part of us being excellent. So thank you for being a part of that.
Other comments? Mr. Gardner?
Just thank you, Barry, for what you do. We thank the Association of Counties, and we'll pencil you in for next February.
I hope to be here. Thank you. We presented this award last week. We had a webinar because we didn't have our meeting, as you all know, but we wanted to do it on the same day that the awards would have been presented, so a lot of people saw it, and they know what's going on here, and I imagine you probably get a few phone calls. Thank you again very much.
Well done, Barry. Thank you, John. Thank you very much indeed. The next public presentation is item number two, Road Safety Project, with Mr. Bob Giangiorgi. Bob?
Good to see you, sir. Good to see everyone, and I thank county council for allowing us to talk about the Road Safety Awareness Program, something that we feel is very important.
I noticed that we have our sheriff here. Thank you, Lee, for coming. I know this is a big part of your ministry out on the roads, too, so thanks for being here. Can you tell us who you have with us here? So we know?
Right, and I'm going to make one brief comment, and then I'll turn it over to Fiona Martin.
Fiona Martin, good, thank you.
And the program itself, the Road Safety Awareness Program, is one that she has designed. But let me say, I'm part of KC Trails. We're a county citizen group that advocates for more trails in Kershaw County. In 2019 and early 2020, we had many discussions throughout the county about interest in more trails. One of the things that came up, the top three issues, had to do with road safety. How many people talked about their unwillingness to get out, walk, run, bike on county roads just because of road safety? So that is, it is a critical issue, and it's, what we're going to be talking about is an outgrowth of that kind of response from county citizens. Fiona is with the Kershaw County Runners, Walkers, and Cyclists Organization. It's basically a Facebook organization, but a lot of members and strong interest from that group. So I'll turn it over to Fiona. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome, Fiona.
Thank you. I hope you don't mind me removing my mask, so you can hear me. So thanks, thank you, Bob, and thank you, gentlemen on the council, to allow me to present our public awareness campaign for you. My name is Fiona Martin. I grew up in Camden. I've been residing in Lugoff with my husband for eight years now. We're both avid cyclists, and I'm a world-class triathlete, so I spend a lot of times on our roads. And I'd love to present what we are experiencing and how we're trying to tackle it, and hopefully how the council can help us moving forward. So the situation is not great in terms of South Carolina. We have some of the worst bicycle and pedestrian death rates in the nation from SC D O T and from Palmetto Cycling Coalition. Here's the trends in pedestrian fatalities in South Carolina going up to 2017. You can see it is unfortunately on the rise. And then this is how South Carolina stacks up in comparison with the national averages, and unfortunately, we are above national averages in all of the groups highlighted here, older adults and then people of color as well. Here's the newest stats coming out for the entire U.S. This is cycling deaths by location. And this slide in particular, I find very important because there is a perception that pedestrian and bicycle deaths is a problem for cities, but as you can see, the deaths are occurring almost equally in urban, suburban, and rural areas, and I'm pretty sure Kershaw County falls into these designations. This is a deaths by road type, and we can see here that the arterial roads are really the most dangerous for cyclists in terms of deaths. And then I would love to share some local experience of what we see out on our roads. Yep, so this was all filmed in Lugoff and Elgin in 2019. A few common things I want to highlight in these is we have drivers that are passing extremely close. If we have a pothole, something run out in front of us, winds that would throw us into the vehicles. You'll also see drivers passing with oncoming traffic. We're also navigating poor roads when it comes to potholes, but also rumble strips are a real danger for cyclists as well. And you'll notice there's nowhere for pedestrians or runners to be on the sides of these roads either. So this is a big issue throughout the U.S. How do we solve the problem? First of all, education, that's educating the public, the drivers, people who are using the roads, pedestrians and cyclists. You know, I wish we had education in our schools with children to show them how to ride bikes properly. I would love for SCD M B to include how to drive safely around vulnerable road users. You know, we're trying our best to educate the public in any way that we can. Next, enforcement. We do have laws on the books that protect vulnerable road users, but that said, you know, our law enforcement can't be with us 24/7, and unfortunately, these laws generally come into place when someone's already been injured and killed. So enforcement is certainly a part of this, but it's not something that's going to change a dangerous driving culture. Engineering, highlighted in my video, you'll see that the roads aren't particularly engineered for multimodal transportation. I know these are roads that were designed and engineered decades ago, but you know, I'd make the argument that at some point, we need to be considering what we're going to do for the decades to come. And then finally, infrastructure. As mentioned, where I live in Kershaw County, Lugoff, we have no sidewalks, there are no crosswalks, there are families. crosswalks, there are families crossing four-lane highways to go buy groceries, there's, you know, men riding bikes in the dark to get to work. The infrastructure isn't there to support us. So what we're doing, this is our campaign just launched this week. We're calling it Slow Down, Give Room. That is the main message. We had a small budget, and so the goal is to get the slow down, give room message to drivers where the problems are happening. I want people to see a pedestrian, a cyclist, and think, slow down, give room, because that's really what we're asking. We want everyone to be able to share these roads and do it safely. Here's a map of where the yard signs are right now. The green dots are where they are located, the yellow ones are where we plan to put them. With a limited budget, we have 120 signs out, so our plan is to rotate these signs to other areas. And these problem areas were identified due to previous accidents, personal experience, and then feedback from the public, in particular, the Kershaw County Runners, Walkers, and Cyclists.
Would you explain what the yellow and the blue and the green signs mean here?
Yes, sir. The green dots are where signs are currently today, and they will be there probably for the next couple of weeks. And then the yellow dots are where we're planning to put them. Because we have a limited print run, so unfortunately, we can't have them everywhere. So we're trying to be strategic and do the best we can with what we have. And so we'll be rotating the signs to those yellow dots in the coming weeks. Here's photos of signs up in Lugoff, Elgin, and Camden. I've had some good response from people saying they've seen them out. And then, if we can get more funding, I certainly think there's room to expand the campaign. Some of the ideas include this one right here. This is from a cycling advocate in England. They have the same issue as us with drivers passing extremely close, so they had high-vis vests made with the safe pass message on it. This was received well by drivers and cyclists. Here's an example of billboards in other parts of the country that are giving the message of, you know, give room, and also that every lane is a bike lane, that cyclists are allowed to be on the road and pedestrians are going to be on the road unless we have sidewalks. And then here is some interesting ones from governmental organizations. The first flyer is in Jacksonville, Florida. This was sent out with people renewing their license plate tags and again, trying to pass the message on, keep the citizens safe. And then signage. There's a lot of debate about whether the Share the Road sign really is doing any good at this point. People interpret that differently. May use full lane is a sign used in other states. I pursued this with SC DOT and was told that that sign is not for approval in this state, which it would be great if we could advocate for that because I think it is a low-cost option to get the education message out there. And then I would love to quickly, hopefully, chat through some common responses I get when I talk to people about what we're facing on the road. First of all, it's a personal choice issue. So of course, I'm choosing to train on the road for my health and happiness, but we have to keep in mind that not everyone has a personal choice. There are many people who don't have reliable transportation, who have to walk and cycle to do what they need to do. And whether it's a personal choice or not, I don't think people should be injured or killed because of it. Walkers, runners, and cyclists need to be more visible. This is, this is one I hear a lot. I can tell you, I can wear every high-vis vest, I can wear every bright bit of clothing, every flashing light, and people will still drive their car at me. This boils, this statement boils down to victim blaming in my mind. We need to take personal responsibility in being safe on the road, but a high-vis vest is not gonna prevent someone from driving into me. I'm surprised you run, walk, ride those roads. So a lot of, I promise you that no one is out looking for dangerous roads to be on. What's happened as the county has grown and with more development, the roads that we used to run and walk and ride that were safe are now busy. There's houses going up and there's not, there's no accommodation for the extra traffic and the extra people out on these roads. So as much as I wish there was a teleporter that could teleport me from one safe road to another, it doesn't exist, and we're losing ground. Roads that were safe are no longer safe anymore. In your videos, I can't tell who the aggressor is. I weigh 130 pounds, me and my bike are about 150, and I can assure you that I'm not going out and picking a fight with 3,000-pound vehicles. So while some of the videos you may see on YouTube show some aggression, it is always in response to someone threatening us with their vehicle. We don't have the money. Well, I mean, we will never have the money unless it's planned for. There is state and federal funding out there, and me as a citizen advocate, that's not something I can apply for. If we have a champion in the county, in the city, in the state that can apply for those funds, then I hope that we can get the money to make things happen. And also look into cost-effective ways. This is not, let's have 5,000 miles of bike lanes in Kershaw County. Nobody's asking for that. But if a road is being repaved, is there an opportunity to look into having improvements done at the same time? And here's the, here's the Kershaw County Bicycle Pedestrian Greenways Plan. This is a great document. I have read it all, I've noted it, I've marked it. This says everything I'm saying now, but in much better terms with the research and the solutions behind it. But, this was published in 2013, so as someone on the ground, at times, it's hard to see what has happened here. Funding opportunities are no longer there. Bike routes that are highlighted in this are no longer applicable because we've been bullied off the roads. And so, as much as I love this, I would love to see action taken from this or from some other research document that needs to happen. Most of our roads are state roads. We don't control them. So as a road user, I don't know if the road I'm on is a city road, a county road, or a state road. But SC DOT on February 5th passed a departmental directive in support of complete streets. So the advocates at the state level have got some movement going there. It's gonna take acceptance at the top levels and acceptance in the ground roots and, in the grassroots, excuse me. And I'm here as grassroots, and I'm here in front of the county council because I live in Lugoff, and I don't have a city council to appeal to. So ultimately, I just hope that all of us can work together to have some sort of improvement because the situation is getting worse. There was a woman killed outside my neighborhood in June 2019, walking on the road. We had a cyclist hit and severely injured this year, January 11th in Lugoff. I really don't want to be the next one. I don't want my husband to be the next one. And then finally, special thanks to Eat Smart, Move More, Kershaw County and South Carolina, and for KC Trails. They were the primary funders of this Road Safety Awareness Campaign that I hope that you will support and help amplify and use as a stepping stone to do more great work. Thank you.
That's a great briefing. Open it up to council for any comments.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Appreciate you bringing this awareness. I've been an avid runner, an avid cycler, and I was always concerned. I'd ride in the road, in the lane, to make the cars go around me and slow down deliberately. I'm even more scared now because my son's, my youngest son is an avid runner. He cycles. So thank you so much for what you're doing. And I'd love to talk with you at some point, if there's anything we can work together on, I'm there with you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones. I think, I think we run in the same area, so.
We have, we do. I just follow my wife on a bike now, she runs. But thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Conras.
Fiona, thank you so much for coming. Bob, thank you so much for coming. We've had many conversations about this. Thank you for helping us raise awareness on this. Question, so the document there, the greenways, bikeways documents, how best could we go about revising that? Because obviously, 2013, that's old, that's dated. And if it's gonna do us any good, it has to be revised. So you think some sort of citizens group that we could help us advise on that?
Yeah, 100%. And actually, I did also want to come to the council and make it clear, this is not just a Fiona Martin problem. So I do have a petition with over 100 signatures that outlines five things that I think the council can do to help improve it, and many of those suggestions come from this. So I would like to hand this to whoever.
If you would, give it to Mary, and she'll get it to council. Thank you, Mary. Other comments?
Well, and I'll just, I'll just continue. Thank you so much on that, and it's really timely that you bring this to us. I'm, one of the, one of the projects I've been working on in my area on East Camden has to do with pedestrian safety because we have two schools out there that are, it's a danger zone. Our pedestrian traffic out there picks up, is picking up more and more each year. And so this, this presentation and all of this really just helps raise awareness to a greater point that we've, we've been trying to make. So thank you, and we all know that recreation, having sufficient infrastructure for recreation is key, or is one of the keys to progress. At least, that's, that's my conviction, you know, whether you want to talk about economic development progress or our county growing, but people are gonna come and they're attracted to having that infrastructure. And so, again, just thank you for raising awareness. It's not something that we can do on our own, but we can do together with citizens like yourselves that are committed and that have a passion for it. So thank you so much.
I just want to highlight, it's not just a recreation issue, it's a transportation issue. And I think, I think that's important because the funding for transportation, if we're applying for funds, is gonna be there. So I appreciate it.
You're exactly right. Thank you for clarifying.
Other points? I would say that, oh, yeah, Bob, come on up to the mic there, please.
Just one quick comment. This Road Safety Awareness Program, the comment about.
I can't hear you through that.
Oh, excuse me, yeah. The Road Safety Awareness Program and the directive from DOT relative to complete streets, I mean, they work hand in hand, and it's really directed at making Kershaw County a more livable place for its citizens, a healthier place in which to, you know, live and interact. So it's, it's very simple in some ways, it gets down to that level. One citizen helping the other citizen within the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Let me say this, too. I hope a lot of people hear this. Cyclists have a right to be on that road. They have a right. And runners have a right to feel safe when they're running as well. And the sheriff and I used to run together, and he could keep up with me. But I'm, but I'm telling you, this is a serious situation. And again, just thank, thank you both very much. I'm in with you.
Well, thank you very much, Congressman Jones. A lot of people don't understand the legal aspects of, and this is, this is bike law here in South Carolina, two pages. But again, we're not talking just bikes, we're talking runners, walkers, and then those that really need to have the road to get through their life, their daily life. Again, thank you.
Given the interest on this, we're gonna go by 15 minutes. Please, Mr. Conell, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if the sheriff was able to make out a couple of the license plates you had up there, Fiona.
Sheriff, come on up.
What I was gonna share before we hear from Sheriff Bone is Fiona and Bob, thank you. We experienced a lot of your concerns in that we have, just take, for example, state-maintained and some county-maintained roads. We have studies that are 10 to 15 years old, in some cases, older, where funds have been recommended to be spent based on traffic counts at the time, and nothing ever happens. And in part, it's due to demographics and per capita competition between other larger counties. And we're trying to navigate how to get through that. I would say, if you ever have a question about whether or not you're on a county-maintained or state-maintained road, just feel free to call the staff here at the Government Center, and they can clue you in on, you know, who would have authority or responsibility to fix something on the road if it is a pothole or something else. There are some issues that we can take up pretty quick, take care of pretty quickly. Thank you.
Other comments? I would say that the study that Fiona showed us, Jean Wise, my predecessor's chairman, made sure that I read it. That was one of the rites of passage for me, and it found its way into the vision document that's on page 34 and 35. And also, a number of other concerned citizens like yourself have, were instrumental in getting what I call, not dirt bike, but mountain bike trails, very much in the Clemson property along the Watery River, on the east side, right behind Walmart, and then the property up at, up at Liberty Hill. I guess that's the Austin Sheehan property, and it's really quite large. So mountain bikes have options. Road bikes don't, and we need to take that into consideration. I would also ask the council to consider that the document I passed out to you in December, at our last meeting in December, was a copy of the letter that Mr. Carpenter and I worked to send to DOT saying, west of the Watery, we're not being cared for. We are certain, we have not had one nickel in 20 years put against roads and sidewalks and things of this nature. So we really need to continue to push with the Central Midlands cog, which is the other half of our transportation picture. Y'all all have copies of that. Lastly, we'll close it out by saying what a great public spirit you show, Fiona. You're hard to say no to, and Bob, that you seem to show up wherever good things are happening. It's great to have you here. And Sheriff, always, you add a lot of professionalism to every discussion. Thanks for coming. Any last discussion points, Sheriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer Mr. Conell's question here and then object to Mr. Jones' statement he made earlier about him running faster than me and all that good stuff. But, yeah, we do, we have ran some tags and we've made house visits on some of these. Highway Patrol is also assisting with us. We've created an email account where anyone that's on the runners and joggers, they can let us know, tag numbers and video and stuff to us, and we'll make house calls to them. I might not be able to catch them on the scene, but this video has been helpful for letting us educate people at their houses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Conell.
I actually had someone walk into my office today, and it could have been any one of those where people were crossing the center line, but I had someone walk into my office today, all cars involved, but it may as well have been a bike. They were swerving around, went onto oncoming lane of traffic, and somebody lost an arm, somebody lost a hand, and someone else had a pericardial effusion. All because, you know, people are in a hurry, they can't slow down a little bit, or they're not obeying the rules of the road.
Thank you, sir.
They put their, their conveniencey ahead of safety, that's what happens.
Yeah. Lastly, Mr. Conras.
Yeah, one last question for our guest, and I asked this question because I think it'll help take care of another problem. So you talk about other cars being, cars being issues. How much is litter on the side of the road an issue as you're cycling? And I say that kind of funny, but I'm also serious because I think that may be an impediment.
So yeah, debris on the side of the road is always an issue, so maybe not so much trash, but things like people blowing the grass clippings into the road, you know, fallen trees. Another big issue for us is loose dogs. They love a cyclist.
Well, that, that just helps prove our case that while we need to litter, as well as all these other things that we've talked about, that we've, we've got to get a handle on our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Bob and Fiona. Thank you, and Sheriff, always, thank you for coming. With that, that concludes our public presentations. We move past the proclamation, which has been deleted to an approval of minutes. It's a tab A, page three, and it's up on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
The move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Brazel, any discussion on the minutes from the previous meeting? Seeing there are none, we move to a vote. All those signify your approval, and it's unanimous, and those are approved. Mary, thank you very much indeed. With that, we move to an administrative update, and it's the COVID update by Mr. Carpenter. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you can see the graph is going in a positive direction. It's been dropping the last several days. Our 14-day total is now down below 600 into the 500s, and it's dropped every day for about the last five days, so hopefully, we'll continue that trend. Again, the average cases, last two days, we've been below our February average, so again, that's the positive direction that we're trending in. And the total number of monthly cases, God willing, it'll continue to drop, and so we will find ourselves far below the previous two months. And the coroner's not reported additional mortality in the last five days, so things are heading where we would hope they would go.
All right. Any comments for anyone here? Mr. Jones, you're up first.
I would like to thank this county council four times for its six-foot distancing. Because I had asked time and time again that we do that so we could pull our masks off, and I appreciate that very much. So, anyway, just wanted to pass that on to you.
I think the interpretation is we keep the mask on and go six feet.
Let me say something.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
If I can walk into a restaurant with a mask on, and I, listen, if this is the law, I'll obey the law, even if it's a stupid law. When you walk into a restaurant, you have your mask on, you go sit down at a table, and you're sitting next to, I don't tell how many people, and you can take your mask off and eat, so why can't I take my mask off when I sit here at this council seat six foot away? Safer here than I am at a restaurant downtown Camden.
That's the interpretation of the law from Camden, so we ask you to be...
They got it wrong.
Well, I ask you to be in compliance today.
I am in compliance.
Put your mask on, please.
I'm not.
All right, well, I'll have to ask for a brief recess here, and then we'll come back once we're in compliance, Mr. Jones. Thank you. We are recessed until we are in compliance. Thank you very much.
Mr. DeBo...
Did you turn off the mic?
Continue. All right. Okay, we are reconvened, and the judgment is, Mr. DeBo, would you read that again?
That's not the actual ordinance. This is the city's synopsis of it online.
That'll be good.
But I think that's what it says. It says face coverings are not required to be worn when a person is traveling in a private vehicle, semicolon, alone in an enclosed space, or able to maintain a minimum distance of six feet from other persons at all times.
All right, very good. Let's continue then.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we get into other discussion matters, please?
About concerning this?
No, I wanted to get on to the shots and stuff, but did you have another topic?
No, 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 let me just say, thank you both of y'all for looking up the orders to make sure that everybody understands it in here. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And appreciate you calling the meeting back to order.
Absolutely. Can we, Vic, you want to add anything further about the shots? You're on the board, and by the way, we are all very proud of Mr. Carpenter. He's on the state board and helps advise on way forward on the COVID. Can you tell us what you have about shots and things of that nature?
The governor has moved anybody 65 and older or eligible for vaccines. Vaccines can now be scheduled. The hospital has on their website a number you can call. You can also do it through CVS. I was in there the day and it was packed with individuals getting their shots. This is still in the Phase 1B category that they're working on, so first responders still, frontline medical people, seniors aged 65 and older, any of them, or people that are hospitalized are all eligible to receive the shots.
Very good. So, Phase 1B means 65 and older?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, most, I mean, these code words are sometimes confusing to our people, and we need to speak English, and I appreciate you saying that. I know that Kershaw Health, Sue Shugert told me on Friday, and indeed tomorrow, they will open up an additional expanded area at, what's it called? The Health Resources Center?
Yes, sir.
On Battleship Road, out on 521, correction, 601, headed south out of Camden. And are there any other sites other than that one?
Not currently that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Lot of frustration. All of us are getting those calls, and I keep referring them to whatever websites that exist. Other comments? All right, I've gotten the shot, and it doesn't hurt. The second shot, I'm told, is going to be a little bit tougher. And for those who have had COVID, when you get the shot, the reaction sometimes can be painful. Other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Carpenter, and that ends the administrative update. We move now to a series of ordinances. Item number one is a third reading of an ordinance on an intergovernmental agreement, otherwise known as an IGA, with the town of Bethune. It's at tab B, page six, and it's on the screen. Mr. Carpenter, can you bring us up to speed here?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you for a third reading tonight, an ordinance that authorizes Kershaw County to provide certain services to the town of Bethune that are related to planning. It has previously been approved by the county council on two previous readings unanimously.
Okay, very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Brazel. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Couple, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, a couple of questions. How much is this going to cost us?
Nothing. The town of Bethune is required to pay any expenses that are related to it.
So, what expenses could that be? An example?
Example could be if we do a site review or a plan review, then the time that would be spent, we would charge the fee and collect the fee, which would cover our costs.
The fee or collect the fee to the citizens of the...
Whoever is requesting, the developer or the builder, whoever is requesting that plan.
So, if the town of Bethune requested a developer...
If the town requests a service that is not covered by the fee, then they would pay whatever that amount of money is.
Fee. What fee?
A plan review fee. I think we've had, how many, Mike, two in the last couple of years?
The five years I've been here, we've been contacted probably less than a handful of times from Bethune.
Yeah. Mike, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Have you checked around? Is this something that's done in other counties?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How do you feel about it?
I don't know, we have no problem helping them out. We just didn't have anything in writing to, I mean, it's the purview of council to allow us to do those things, so it was something we had to run through.
So, this is something you would be in favor of?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Carpenter, thank you for answering those questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I think we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and it passes on the third reading, and someone can pass that along to Bethune. Mr. Gardner, that's your district. Item number two is a second reading of an ordinance with a zoning consideration. It's at tab C, and the map is up there. It's at page eight. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have in front of you tonight for a second reading, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for approximately 53 acres of land located in the Westville area. The two current zonings are MRD 1 and RD 2, and both would be moved to GD. It was previously approved by county council on first reading.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve, please?
A move.
Mr. Gardner, a second? Mr. Snodgrass, good. Any discussion? Mr. Gardner, you want to lead off?
Yeah, I think this is about the Carolina Motorsports Park. They've been a good citizen for Kershaw County and a good business, and this is allowing them to expand if necessary or whatever, so I think it's a good idea to allow them to make the purchase and change the zoning for them.
Very good. Other comments, Mr. Snodgrass?
Yeah, I have a comment, and then I have a question for staff. Voted for this first time, think it's a good thing, great county neighbor, Motorsports Park, going to bring, just continue economic growth to that area of the county. And then a question for staff, so if I understand, I don't understand it correctly, they're building, they're building, or they would like to build structures that could house guests or customers when they come in? Is that, read that correctly?
I believe that's correct. Yes, sir.
Would that, would that be subject to accommodations tax?
I believe there'd be condominiums that'd be owned by people, not rented.
Ah, okay, okay. That's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Good question. Other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
I'd like to, I talked to Mr. Michael Cummins today, he's a super nice guy. I voted against it, first reading, and we talked about it and...
Mr. Snodgrass, please, quiet. Go ahead.
It was unclear. I think, you know, to rezone 50 acres in the middle of Westville to general development was just a little bit concerning, but they're pretty committed to the community. They want to basically develop garage condominiums so these folks can bring their race cars down and have an apartment above it. He talked to me for a solid 20 minutes, and he's pretty passionate about it, so I think it's a good asset for the community, a good asset for Kershaw County, and it'll bring jobs and it'll bring some excitement. And according to our conversation, it will not bring any more potential noise or disturbance of the community that's already there, so.
Okay, thanks. Other comments? Yeah, Ben?
Thanks for sharing that, Russell. In addition to that, it might actually increase traffic at the airport with the folks coming in and out of town that would be in the market to have these kind of locations and have the kind of cars they're talking about. And you're right on noise, there are already racing cars around there all the time, and these high-power go-karts all the time, so it kind of is what it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jimmy?
I would like to say this, that I agree with Mr. Gardner. That's one of the best things they got going for them up there, and I think anything we can do to support and encourage is the right thing to do. So, I definitely plan to support this.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Tom?
Just, you know, you talk about noise, well, if there's anywhere in the county where it's sparsely populated, where noise is not a problem, that's one of them. So, I don't think that's, that's an issue at all.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. I'm glad you talked to Mr. Cummins. Anybody who's met him will understand his commitment to this community, this county, and the investment that they have already made, and more yet to follow. And business that's coming here that I have personally witnessed will be of tremendous importance to us, and may add to our horse culture with a different horsepower. With that, I think we're ready to move to a vote on the second reading. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary, and we can move that to item, to number, the third reading. Lastly, we have some new business discussion regarding local legislative delegation. It's at tab D, and there's reference material beginning at page 36 with an extract from our budget, and 37 with a legal opinion. Jimmy, you wanted to open this one up. Go ahead. I don't think there's a vote required here. Is that correct?
I'm not asking for a vote.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, do we need a motion to discuss? I guess we'd...
I think so.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's have an open forum.
I don't mind.
Would you make the motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we discuss the local legislative delegation.
Thank you, sir. A second?
I'll give it a second.
Mr. Snodgrass over here. With that, Jimmy, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. Where do I start? I just want to make sure that we have some clarification here, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. I had talked with some folks about, you know, they have a budget. I think the law requires us to supply them with some monies and some office space, but if they want anything above and beyond what this county council has budgeted and approved, they have to come back before this county council. It cannot be made on any other level. Does anybody disagree with that? I mean, I...
No, I think you're right.
I know I'm right, but thank you.
Well, I mean, if I may, that's what's in the budget, there's no other money for them, so they don't have a choice but to do that.
I understand, but I'm just saying...
I agree with you.
Thank you.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I have a reason for being here, and I just want to leave it at that. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that if anybody from the local legislative delegation approaches our administrator, our deputy administrator, our clerk of the county council, they don't work for this local legislative delegation. They work for the county administrator, this county council, at least Mary does, and of course, they work for the county administrator. But I just want to make sure they understand, they don't have to jump to their marching I'm not, I'm not here to personalize this, I'm not here to call names, I'm here just to make a fact. I want our local legislative delegation to hear me loud and clear. Do not come up here and be, try and tell our administrator what to do. I'll take personal issue with that. Also, I'd like to say that I'd like to congratulate Vic Dabney for being elected publicly in an open meeting as the chair of the legislative delegation, and also, I'd like to congratulate, okay, Mrs. Gwynn, Katie Gwynn, for being appointed the secretary to the legislative, local legislative delegation. She's a wonderful person, she's going to do a great job, and I'm looking forward to us working with all the local legislative delegation. Thank you.
Other discussion? I think we have agreement.
I feel better.
Good. Any other discussion? All right, very good. With that, I think we go to council briefings. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brazel, you lead off.
I don't really have anything to talk about. I think everything's pretty cut and dry.
Thank you very much. Mr. Conell?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones?
No report.
Thank you, sir. David, way over there.
I joined these other guys with no report this month.
Okay, Mr. Gardner?
I'd like to wish my granddaughter a happy birthday. She's two today, so happy birthday, Finley. Thank you.
Happy birthday back. It's wonderful.
I will point out that to close out before I turn it over to the administrator, it is Black History Month. We have a declaration to that effect in honoring Mr. Tucker's request. We'll delay our vote, but everybody should recognize that. Now, on my side of the world, 40 years ago this month, I started working for a brigadier general named Colin Powell. And then, that's 40 years ago. And then 20 years ago, I'm that old, Jimmy. 20 years ago, he became the first black secretary of state, having already been the first black chairman of the Joint Chiefs. And 100 years ago this week, the 369th Brigade of the U.S. Army, it was an all-black regiment. They were known as the Harlem Hellcats. They were the first unit, an all-black unit, the first unit of any of the Allied armies to reach the Rhine River. Heritage goes deep in our, in our respect and gratitude for the contributions of the black Americans, in our case, soldiers, but uniformly across all disciplines in our society are boundless, and I look forward to approving that resolution with you all next time we meet. I just got a letter that I'm required to read to the council. Ben, it won't surprise you, but it's got the Congressional Medal of Honor at the top of the, and it's handwritten from a sergeant major named Thomas Patrick Payne. And I just, I'm going to read it to the council. "Thank you, Kershaw County, for your continued support. Coming home to South Carolina after the Medal of Honor ceremony was one of my, the highlights of my life, and you, and I am happy to come to talk to the youth back home and..."